I'll call to order the August 15th regular meeting of the Northfield Township Zoning Board of Appeals. Please stand and recite the Pledge of Allegiance.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the Republic for which it stands, one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Mr. Collecki is not here this evening, so I will ask Member Chocley to call roll, please.
Here ma'am.
Here? Here. Thank you. Yes, absent with notice. All right, do I have a motion to adopt tonight's agenda as presented with?
So moved, Madam Chair.
I would like to add one item under new business. We've been presented with a zoning compliance application and a question as to whether or not the applicant will require variance approval or should appear before this board, so we're going to make that 8A. Does your motion?
So moved, Madam Chair.
Do I have a second?
I'll second that.
All in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
Thank you. Is there any correspondence to the board? Hearing none, moving on. All right, moving down to Agenda Item Number 6A. Public hearing, case number JZBA 160007. Oh, I don't know that I, I don't want to mess up these names. Julio Kogo?
Julio.
Julio Kogo and Judy Hayward of 600 East Shore Drive, Whitmore Lake, Michigan, seek a variance from Northfield Township Land Division Ordinance Section 14.23.A.5 to allow for proposed lot split resulting in two parcels, A and B, with proposed parcel B having a width-to-depth ratio of 1 to 4.47 instead of a width-to-depth ratio of 1 to 4 as required by the State Land Division Act. The parcel number is B02042006 and is zoned SR1 Single Family Residential District.
Second the motion to open the public hearing?
I was already made a motion.
Oh, I thought that was the motion, sorry.
Okay, if you make the motion, I'll second the motion.
Okay. Oh, I move to open the public hearing for case JZBA 160007 as stated by the chair.
It's part.
All in favor?
Aye.
Right. At this time, the applicants have a chance to come up and talk about the variance request, explain a little bit about why you're asking what you're asking for. Yes, and please, when you come up to the podium, give your name and address for the record.
I'm Julio Kogo. I live in South Line, Marshall Road, 983. I'm here to request a lot split on that 600 long, or East Shore Drive. What we propose is to, the house is in pretty bad disrepair, so our proposal is to remodel and re-bring that house up to standards and live in it and eventually build next door in the lot that's, we're going to proposably split. And I guess the issue at hand is, the lot is 380 feet instead of 340 feet, so it's actually 20 feet deeper than shallower. In talking with Vidya, I guess the purpose of the Land Split Act and that 4 to 1 was so that you wouldn't have a 50 by 2,000-foot deep lot, so I don't think that this is beyond being reasonable for the split from the standpoint of the 4 to 1 ratio. I think we meet every other criteria for the split, other than that 40-feet issue where it's a little deeper.
All right, thank you. I'd like to hear from Vidya, please.
Thank you, Madam Chairman. We have reviewed the variance request submitted by Julio Kogo and Julie Hayward to split an existing parcel of land into two, one which has got the existing dwelling and accessory structure, and a second vacant parcel for the construction of a new dwelling. The site is on the east side of East Shore Drive, just south of 8 Mile, and is zoned SR1, which is Single Family Residential 1. Now, the Northfield Township Land Division Act requires that a lot-to-depth ratio, a maximum of 1 is to 4, is permitted. The proposed lot-width-to-depth ratio for parcel B is 1 is to 4.47, so a .47 width-to-depth ratio, or a 40-feet depth variance, is being requested. There are specific standards that were newly adopted by the township to review every request for variance, and I shall summarize those in brief. The first standard would be strict compliance with restrictions governing areas, setback frontage height, lot coverage density, or other non-use matters will unreasonably prevent the owner from using the property for a permitted purpose or will render conformity with these restrictions unnecessarily burdensome. Now, this subject site is a large parcel, considering that it is in the SR1. It's got a total area of 1.44 acres, whereas the minimum lot size requirement in this district is just 10,890 square feet. The site does have an existing dwelling with accessory structures on the northwest portion of the site, providing adequate area for accommodating another dwelling. Now, Mr. Kogo's purpose is to split and create an additional buildable lot. At 1.44 acres, even after splitting of one parcel, there is still a significantly large parcel B left. The minimum required lot width for this district is 80 feet, so when they split it into two lots, A and B, one will have a width of 80 feet, the other will have a width of 85 feet. Now, the existing depth is 380 feet, so no matter which way they split it, they will not be able to meet the 1 is to 4 depth-to-width ratio. Strict compliance with the ordinance standards will prevent the creation of a buildable lot, which otherwise complies with all other provisions for the district in which it is located. Considering the size of the parent parcel and the buildable parcel, this could be construed as being unnecessarily burdensome. Now, the existing dwelling and garage on the parcel, they are non-conforming with respect to some setback requirements, but the applicant's proposed split is not altering that non-conformity in any way, shape, or form. They will remain as they are. The second criteria is the variance will provide substantial justice to the applicant as well as other property owners in the district. We do believe it will provide substantial justice to the applicant by allowing them to create a new buildable parcel and is not adverse to the interests of other property owners in the neighborhood or district. The third criteria is the variance requested is the minimum needed to provide substantial relief to the applicant. As I mentioned, the split is 80 and 85, and 80 is the minimum required width. The parcel that they are seeking a variance for is the wider one with 85 feet. It still meets all the other requirements for the SR1 district, so the applicant has attempted to minimize the variance to the extent possible. The next criteria and the need for the variance is due to unique circumstances that are peculiar to the land, structure, or building involved, and not generally applicable in the area or to other properties. Now, this property is one of the larger parcels on East Shore Drive. With the exception of a few parcels, most of them are much smaller in size than the subject site. The location of the existing dwelling and accessory structures on the site, if you drive past it, it gives it the appearance that there's a huge vacant lot sitting in the middle of East Shore Drive. While the large lot size, it is not necessarily a unique feature, it is not very common among similarly zoned SR1 parcels. The next criteria is the problem and the resulting need for the variance has been created by strict compliance with the zoning ordinance and not by the applicant or the applicant's predecessors, that is, it is not self-created. Now, the problem that creates the need for this variance is from the applicant's desire to split the parcel and create additional buildable lots that does not conform to the state's Land Division Act requirement. The final criteria is the variance will be in harmony with the spirit and intent of the ordinance and will not be injurious or detrimental to public health, safety, and welfare. We believe the standard is met. The variance is not likely to have any adverse impact on the neighborhood or on public health, safety, and welfare. The reason the state Land Division Act has this requirement in it is to prevent the creation of excessively-long flag lots, or they're also called bowling alley lots. A few decades ago, people had the tendency to have a huge parcel of land with a narrow sliver providing access. The intent was to prevent that so that utilities and other things are not challenged. In this case, even after the split, the difference in the depth-to-width ratio will make no discernible difference to the eye when you look at the parcel. It will look like it complies with the ordinance requirements. The frontage along East Shore Drive will remain consistent with the existing single-family development pattern. Based on our review of the proposal submitted, it is our recommendation that the Zoning Board of Appeals approve the requested variance for the property located at 600 East Shore Drive, subject to the following findings of fact: Compliance with ordinance standards would prevent the creation of a buildable parcel, which could be construed as being unnecessarily burdensome. The subject site is almost six times the minimum lot size required for the SR district. The variance will provide substantial justice to the applicant and is not adverse to the interests of other property owners. The variance requested is the minimum possible. The subject site is one of the larger parcels on East Shore Drive. The variance requested is not adverse to the spirit and intent of the ordinance, and any dwelling built on this resultant parcel will be required to comply with all other setback and dimensional requirements for the SR1 district. If a variance is granted by this board, the applicant will have to apply for a lot-split approval from the Township SSR prior to constructing any structure on the newly-created vacant lot. I would be happy to answer any questions.
So Vidya, and I know that this isn't part of this request, but would they have to come back if they want to build on parcel B? Will they have to come back for another variance?
No, as long as they comply with all the front, rear, sideyard setbacks, they do not need to appear before this board again.
Okay.
Are there any other questions from the board at this time?
What's the non-conformity with, problem with the parcel that the house is on? Is it the sideyard setback?
Yes, I believe it's the north sideyard setback for the detached garage and the house, the house does not comply with the front yard setback along East Shore Drive.
Okay. All right, that takes care of it, thank you.
All right, Mr.? Yes?
So if I could have a question for the applicant, Madam Chair? Or you want to come back to that?
Let's come back to that.
Okay, thank you.
All right, thank you. Is there anyone in the audience who wishes to speak in support of the variance application? See, none? Is there anyone who wishes to speak in opposition to the variance application?
You've got to come, sorry. You've got to come to the mic and state your name. No, you're okay. Yep. State your name and address.
My name is Lauren Wallace. My address is 2225 7 Mile Road, South Line. Just listening to the gentleman speak, it sounds like what he wants to do is actually improve our area and community by updating what sounds like an old and outdated home. I like it, it's going to improve my property value, so that's all.
All right, thank you. Thank you, Mr. Wallace. All right.
John Sueda, I live at 574 East Shore Drive. My, I have 40 acres there, and my property is in behind this 600 East Shore Drive and to the south side of it, so I have border on the east and the west. And I want to run a, I made a sketch up, oh, this was last week, based on what was there, and I thought I'd look and see if there's any way to comply with the zoning requirements, but maybe another way than this lot split. And I think a road to a back lot would be the way to go, private road to the end of that lot. And I've looked at, you know, developing my own property, you know, it's 40 acres, and you need a 66-foot road. I think if you put a 66-foot road to a back lot and did the building on the back lot, they don't need a variance, that's done. And I don't know what will be built on there, and maybe the homeowner, proposed homeowner doesn't really know, but it's hard to say. I haven't been here for variances like this before. They've all been like minor variances, you know, setback or property or building height. Something to do with the building where you can actually see what was being done. I would like to see the ratio on course to the letter. And you're going to wind up with a flag-shaped lot no matter what. This is a flag-shaped lot. What's shown on the application, that's also a flag-shaped lot, so I don't know. Why have the rulings, these regulations?
Does anyone have any questions for Mr. Sueda? Am I, did I get your name right, Sueda?
Madam Chair, yes I do.
Yes, please.
You're proposing a 66-foot private road?
Private road.
Right now, there's, was it 27 feet there right now?
I actually own 27 and a half feet just south of this property.
Where are you proposing to get the rest of the, whatever's left, the 29 feet or whatever it is, where do you propose to get that from? To make that 66 feet wide?
Oh, that's going to be out of 165 feet of property. This isn't my property. This is...
No, but you said you want a private road of 66 feet.
That is, no, I don't own a private road. I'm recommending a private road.
This is the private road that he's asking for.
You can put that in, and I don't think there's any variance required at all.
But the, what's there right now is 27 feet, is that correct?
I own 27 and a half feet. Here, I'll show you on this.
But you're proposing a 66-foot road there, right?
I own a strip of land here, 27 feet. You put 66 feet in there.
So you want to take, you're trying to take his property then for the rest of it then?
This is, this is coming out of his property. This is the...
Right here, we're talking right here, right? Where are you going to get the rest of the? So you're going to take his property to make that?
He's going to take his property to make an access.
He's suggesting that that's what this gentleman...
No variance required.
All right, all right, now I got it.
If I could ask Vidya, what is the required lot width at the required setback for SR1?
The required lot width for an SR1 district is 80 feet. This parcel is 88 feet. The challenge, what the gentleman is suggesting, is you cannot build a private road for one house. It becomes a driveway. Waschena County Road Commission will not approve a private road to service one house. It, when you have a roadway servicing one house, it is a driveway. It will not meet private road standards.
Right.
The required minimum width for a private road is 66 feet right-of-way, which is what the gentleman is saying. This is an idea, but it's not an approvable idea.
So he would have to build a private road in order to meet the width of the required setback, correct? Because the setback is at the, or the, the width, is the width measured at the setback or is it measured at the right-of-way?
I can double-check. I can double-check that for you.
Usually it's measured at the setback. It's not setback.
It's measured at the right-of-way if I'm not mistaken, but let me double-check that for you.
Here, it's measured at the right-of-way?
It has to be because it's the property line, it's the property line determination.
Because in Hamburg, it's measured, the road width requirement is at the, at the setback.
Oh, you're talking about the road width? Or are you talking about the lit, with the lot depth ratio?
No, I'm talking about if, if the property owner did this...
There would be no reason for the property owner to do this.
Right, but I'm asking, what is the, what is the required lot width at the front yard setback?
80 feet. The, the ordinance defines the lot width as being measured at the front yard setback line in our ordinance. And here, this lot currently complies because minimum required lot width, this is not, on his drawing, the required lot width would be 85 feet, 80 feet, and he does have 85 feet at the 35-foot setback line.
Right, but this does not? Because they would not allow a private road, so it would be a driveway.
Yes.
So he would still require a variance if he did this?
Yes.
It's, it's not, this still requires variance approval?
I don't know that.
Yes, it does. This would require variance approval.
Yeah, I see the point he was making. This is 66. She's saying you...
Right.
How can you...
I don't recommend a variance.
I thought she meant a lot.
I'm sorry?
I don't recommend a variance.
She's trying to make a point. She's trying to make a point.
Okay.
I don't recommend a variance be granted.
All right.
Too many unknowns.
Mr. Kogo, would you like to, you have a chance to close it with any remarks that you might have. Do you wish to speak?
One of the gentlemen was, had asked, again, he was concerned about what we were going to do with that lot, and, you know, I was hoping to put, you know, high-rise apartments in there. No, no, it's going to be a single-family dwelling. It's just going to be a single-family dwelling in there. And I don't know what Mr. Sueda, you know, we were, we've split this parcel so we have proper frontage, and I don't know about a private road. If that's an issue here, I don't think so. But again, the parcel B would be a single-family dwelling in character with the surrounding homes, so.
All right. Does the board have any other questions for Mr. Kogo?
Did you want to wait till?
Might as well go ahead and ask him now.
Could I ask one more question, sir? There's, there's two stakes in the ground there, one with orange on it and one with pink, when you come in the driveway. Do you know what those are signifying?
You know, Doug, I haven't seen them. They may be surveyors' points.
Okay.
Where they picked up the, the points for the driveway, because I truly, I believe that the, the house is not, is somewhat too close to the road. I don't know what they were for, but we tried to break off enough property with the old house, because that house is going to take some work. I mean, it's got to be jacked up. It's got a river, it's got a river in the basement. I mean, it's going to take some work to fix it up, and I will submit to the building department, we're going to do a, I've got a buddy who's an architect, he's going to come over, we're going to redraw what we're going to do to the house, but first thing is, is the foundation, house is going to have to be jacked up and the foundation put in. There isn't...
No, I appreciate that. I just, I was just curious what it's, it looked like, anyways, I won't even say what it looks like, because that's not a fact, so I'll leave that alone.
I know where the, I believe it's a Travers Point, I think they call it, Vidya?
Yes. If the surveyor went, Mr. Julio had to get a full survey done for this property, and the surveyor probably ran the stakes where the monument ions were there in order to, so he probably color-coded it so that he could get the setbacks correct.
Okay, all right. No, it is a beautiful piece of property though, it's just, it's really something, but...
And it goes, it goes even further back into the woods, so I mean, it's...
Yes, it's really something, okay. Thank you, sir.
Thanks.
All right, do I have a motion to close the public hearing? Oh, yes, Mr. Sueda, please.
I'll just say, if Mr. Kogo were to revise his plan to reflect what I've shown you, if Mr. Kogo would revise his plans and submit what I've sketched with a private road with the lot lines on the back, all the setbacks on the back piece of property, I would have absolutely no objection. He could do whatever he wants to do with that piece of property, but I can't go for this variance.
All right, thank you. Do I have a motion to close the public hearing for JZBA 160007?
I'll make the motion to close the public hearing.
Second?
I'll second that.
All in favor?
Aye.
Aye. All right, old business. Is there anything the board needs to revisit? Nothing? All right. We'll move on to Agenda 8, new business, and we are going to hear from Mr. Wallace, who has a request for the board.
Madam Chairman? Yes. If I may summarize it a little bit, the board will be aware of what Mr. Wallace is going to request of you. Just to give you a little background, the property that you're discussing is 2225 7 Mile Road. There is an existing single-family dwelling on this property. Mr. Wallace owns it. Mr. Wallace put in an addition to the dwelling. He was required to submit for a zoning compliance after the fact. So the zoning compliance forms are typically submitted to the township for approval by the zoning administrator. At the time we looked at the drawing, we realized the setbacks that are written on the zoning compliance drawing indicates that the proposed addition, the addition, not proposed, the addition was not built in compliance with the setbacks. The addition does not comply with the required sideyard setback, so the zoning compliance application had to be denied. The only way at this point is since the structure has already been built, the applicant, if it's a non-conforming structure they have built, they need to appear before this board in order to get approval for the structure that they have constructed, should the board choose to approve the variance. Now, when they appear before the board for a variance, especially a setback variance, the ordinance requires that a survey be submitted, a survey be done by a certified surveyor. And Mr. Wallace had submitted documentation based on the Waschena County GIS maps indicating the setbacks from the addition to the property line. Unfortunately, from a planning or a zoning administrator's standpoint, I cannot accept a county-drawn map in lieu of a boundary survey, because the ordinance does not give me the authority to make a determination whether that drawing is acceptable or not. So instead of going back and forth, we thought it would be better if Mr. Wallace could come before you tonight and present his case and ask to present a drawing for your consideration for variance, that is not what is required specifically by the ordinance, because I cannot make that deviation. The board is the one that has to hear the variance and make a determination on it, so if you would provide guidance on what you would consider acceptable, that would set a benchmark for what I could accept as a review. Mr. Wallace does have to appear before you one way or the other, because the zoning compliance permit was denied, since it did not comply. The question here is, what documentation would you consider to be acceptable to appear before you for a request for variance? And the specific section of the ordinance that speaks about it is Section 36943, subsection I will read it out if you don't have your ordinance in front. The ordinance, this, Section 36943 deals with variances, and subsection C deals with information required, and under that subsection 2 says, "boundary survey showing all property lines, dimensions, and bearings of angles correlated with the legal description, all existing and proposed structures and uses on the property, existing zoning of subject and adjacent property, dimensions of structures and their dimensional locations, lot area calculations necessary to show compliance with the regulations of this chapter. Such drawings shall also include well and septic locations, easements, and significant tree and wetlands if they exist on the site." That is the requirement of a survey for a request to appear before you. So having given that introduction, I will defer to Mr. Wallace so he can explain what he would like to present before you for consideration of a variance.
As I've stated earlier, Lauren Wallace, 2225 7 Mile Road, South Line, Michigan. To rebuttal, Vidya made comment that her office cannot accept the GIS information to its level of accuracy. However, I submitted my proposed drawing based off measurements to an old cattle fence. I had no idea how accurate or specific I needed to be to the setback. So they used GIS, had the GIS actually shown... So they used GIS. Had the GIS actually shown thirty-foot or more, then they would have accepted. But because what they used showed under thirty-foot, then they refuted the application. Now, I've had nothing but time on my hands, especially due to the expense. The survey that was required... Who am I should start with? I'd like to all to see this.
Sure. Thank you.
The survey required is thirty-one hundred dollars to have it done.
Would you repeat that again, please? I'm sorry.
Three thousand one hundred. And that's a full explanation of why the survey, due to the location and size of the lot. Basically, going over your folks' own charter. "A variance will be in harmony with the spirit and intent of this ordinance, will not be injurious to the neighborhood or otherwise detrimental to the public health, safety, and welfare. Also, a variance can be rendered if the conformity with those restrictions are unnecessarily burdensome." I can't afford to have this large of a survey done. Now, what I've also done, because I have time, I went through and I found a contact. Her name is Chelsea. I didn't get her last name. She works with Washtenaw County in the GIS. And she explained to me, and I'm going to pass around, this is an exact, as best as I could do, drawing of the footprint of my home with the measurements of the addition. And I had it explained to me that what happens is the pixels of the screen are what dictates a matter of about a half a foot or so. I was unable to get this to be specifically right on my property lines as they are thrown down. This is the existing footprint, it's two... It's actually a thirteen by seventeen. I could not get exact, but I brought all the lines out. I did this one foot out because with the old siding and the new siding, it would just be unglued. So I had to, I didn't want to try and handle it.
Okay.
That's the existing problem. I had to adjacent them off, or the numbers showed up right over time. But that is a pixel difference one way or another. When I submitted my drawing, I literally did to the old cattle fence that was there. Grapevine-laden, you know, if I took it to the stakes at the ground, I'm just assuming my fence is where it's supposed to be.
Madam Chair? Yes, Vidia? I would defer to the township manager also to provide, because he's also been involved in this process of discussion. So I would defer to him also to provide some input.
Yeah, so let me give you, let me give you a little bit of background on this, just to help Mr. Wallace out so that you understand the picture that's going on here. Is, there's a requi, because you didn't really touch on this, Mr. Wallace. There's a required thirty-foot setback on the side of the property, okay? Mr. Wallace submitted a document. When people, this from a staff-level perspective, sort of administrative-level perspective. When people submit a document related to zoning compliance, we don't require a boundary survey document for zoning compliance certification, okay? So Mr. Wallace submitted a document showing that his setbacks were twenty-nine feet from the addition to the property line. And he measured that from the addition to the existing fence, okay? The setback requirement was thirty feet, so he was a foot off. So when that application came in, Vidia correctly denied the application and indicated that he had to go in front of the ZBA. The issue then becomes, Mr. Wallace has indicated that he is concerned about the cost of the survey, whatever that cost is, for that one foot. And the question came up is, well, can the ZBA grant a variance? Let's say if we know that it's one foot off, can the ZBA grant a variance of up to five feet? Which I've seen, I have personally seen done many times. Now, the issue comes into play that Mr. Wallace is talking about, where the GIS, depending on how you look at the GIS, the GIS can come up. And remember, GIS is not perfectly accurate. The fence is not perfectly accurate. They are data points. I mean, it's not to say that they're not, they're not irrelevant. They're just not precise. And so the GIS, depending on the angle or the pixelation of the GIS, it can come up as thirty feet, or it can come up as twenty-nine feet, or it can come up as twenty-eight feet. There are various, just, it's, I mean, we're literally within a foot or two off here. Would you agree with that, Vidia? Potential, if we agree with these data points, obviously. I mean, we're close.
Yeah. Typically, we never accept fence lines as a benchmark for measurements because fences are notorious for being this way, that way, especially on larger acreage parcels. It's difficult to figure that out. Mr. Wallace makes a good point, and like Howard said, when homeowners submit for a zoning compliance, we don't make it so difficult that they have to get the, get like a full registered architect drawing. But the drawing that is submitted is accepted as a true representation of what is there. The drawing did show twenty-nine feet, so I had no choice to unsee the twenty-nine feet and say, maybe it is thirty feet. So I had no choice, based on the documentation submitted, to deny it. I fully acknowledge the point he's making. My concern comes from the standpoint for the survey. Just to clarify, I'm just trying to, trying to get you to see where I'm coming from. This is an ag-zoned parcel. It's a large parcel. But a change in the standards for what documentation you would accept for consideration of a variance will go across the township to every zoned parcel. Now, a foot, two foot, five feet might not make too much of a difference in a parcel this size because there's so much acreage. But if we go to, say, one of the smaller parcels around Horseshoe Lake or something, or Whitmore Lake, and we are talking about the same deviation, that same one or two feet can make a big difference between neighbors. So that's, that's the, that's the point at which I'm, I am having a little...
And I concur. I absolutely one-hundred percent concur with that. And thus why it's in front of you. Because Vidia is absolutely one-hundred percent correct in the, in that, in every step of this process, it was correctly denied, and we cannot waive the survey requirement because it's expressly stated in the ordinance. The only body that would be able to do that, if you so choose, would be the ZBA. And so we've brought it in front of you because Mr. Wallace has indicated that it's too expensive to do this. I mean, I have a personal opinion on this. I'm just trying to state the facts here, though. Mr. Wallace has indicated that it's too expensive to do the survey. And is there, is there a possibility that the ZBA can hear this case without that thirty-one hundred dollar expense of the survey? And Vidia's concerned about the language of the ordinance saying a survey is required. And thus, we are sort of at a standstill and why we've suggested for this to be heard, Mr. Wallace.
So what is the amount of variance that he is looking for?
That is exactly why I need a survey. Based on Mr. Wallace's drawing, it looks like one feet. After we found out that it's maybe not one feet, I go to the GIS drawings. I get our mapping person in our office to look. It might be as much as one point seven-five feet, or maybe slightly more so. I don't know what that number is.
And I, not to put something below the waterline of my own case, but I agree with Vidia. I can understand her concern for this projecting beyond this. But I also work in a union shop, and we have what's called past practice. You're allowing this variance on a five-acre parcel. So if anybody did come before you to argue their point, will you allow this before? Yes, but we did it on five acres. And I'm also zoned agricultural.
Well, remember, though, just as a clarification, they are only talking right now about whether or not they allow you to come in front of them without a survey.
Right.
Not approving the variance, just so you know.
I understand. But I also wanted to be, you know, I wanted to explain why if we didn't do the survey, I think it would hold water down the road for each of you. If anybody did argue, will you allow it for this? There's some extenuating circumstances. I seriously doubt anybody else would come in here zoned agricultural, five acres. I mean, there's some things that you could stand your ground on, so I don't want that to be a concern to you.
Mr. Wallace, most of the township is zoned ag. This map, all of which is white, is zoned ag. So there is the odds of another property with a similar ag zoning coming are great. The point I'm trying to make it is, we are on a slippery slope. At what point, from a land use law perspective, I need to make sure that the procedure that we follow is consistent for all homeowners.
Based on your same map, though, okay, it's zoned ag, how large are all those parcels?
All the ag parcels are anywhere from five acres up to, even the parcel I heard a few days ago was sixty-two, but I'm sure there are larger parcels than that.
What's the smallest parcel? Well, you see what I'm getting at? Your concern with somebody in town would want that variance granted.
Okay, so for one thing, all the would-be, could-be is not important at this point. I think what we need to find out, though, is, the purpose of the survey is to find out what that actual variance is. And you're telling us that to have a survey would be a financial burden to you at this point?
Yes, it would.
Just for a foot or two feet?
Especially, had I known, I was naive, I didn't realize I needed a thirty-foot setback. I would have measured to the ground. I just stood, put it on a nail, and walked over to the fence, drooped over with grapevines and raspberries, as I'm sure we've all seen in our neighborhoods. I had no idea how critical this last foot was going to be.
Could it be perceived that the fence line is anywhere between two feet from the property, the actual property line?
I would not be able to say that. I, fences have gone, they might be on the property line, might be five feet off. So I, to be honest, in eighteen years, I've never reviewed a ZBA case without a survey. This is my first experience.
Man, oh, go ahead.
Member Chocley? We had my property surveyed, and we thought it was fifty-three acres. And it ended up, there was extra three acres there between mine and my neighbors. And their fence was on my property. But after the survey, we ended up splitting it. You know, I got two-thirds of that extra three, and they got, you know, a third of it, you know, because it's not precise. And so it is a challenge, because the next person coming up next door to you might have an issue. But you could gain some property that you wouldn't, weren't expecting to gain to do that. I had to have mine surveyed. But the, it seems to me it's a self-created problem. Did you, did you come in to get approval or a building permit or anything to build that before you built it? And then, at which case, that this might have been taken care of. You didn't come in?
I have no one to blame for myself in this. I'm not trying to shut that off at all. I created this problem. But I, coming before you, because using the GIS, I mean, literally, had I wrote down thirty and Vidia's company used the GIS, they might have been angled it around and got the same measurements I got on this. And then, all of this would have been avoided. That's why I brought in what I was able to project, working with Chelsea at the GIS.
As a, as a planner, I can tell you that having a survey takes the guesswork out of the job. And it makes it better for the homeowner, it makes it better for the staff, it makes it better for, it also protects the township as well. So, yes, I understand that surveys are pricey. Unfortunately, it's the cost of doing, it's the cost of cleaning up this problem. And to not request, to not require a survey, I think is a mistake for the township. Because it makes the job of our planner that much more difficult, and it creates problems down the road. When I get a hand-drawn plot plan with, well, I think my fence line is my property boundary. It just, it's problematic, and it's not just problematic at the time, but those problems can be long-lasting. So I would prefer that the board require the survey.
My concern with this, though, is that company uses the GIS to grant or decline. And if they don't trust the accuracy of it, why are they using it for that?
I don't think that we're here to say that we're going to decline anything. I think the problem here is being, is that we don't know what to approve. I think that's the major problem. We don't know whether to approve one foot, we don't know whether to do it two feet. We don't even know if we are giving you ten feet. We don't know what to approve. And I think that's the concern.
And there is also a possibility that the survey will reveal that Mr. Wallace actually has land. He's more than thirty feet away. He might not even need a variance. That's a possibility, too. And just a clarification, we don't rely solely on the Washtenaw County GIS. It's just one of the data sources. We don't rely on it in order to approve or not approve. This is one of the closest in the setbacks that I have seen in the zoning compliance applications that have come to the township. It is, it is a challenging situation all of them.
So he could get a private surveyor also to do it, get an estimate for a private surveyor as well, right?
Whatever, Mr. Wallace.
Okay.
I did. That was the quote.
Okay.
That's why I'm...
But the, okay.
Madam Chair, if I may?
Might be other ones.
Yes.
I don't think there's anybody in this board that don't sympathize with you at all about the cost of this. I do, and I'm sure the rest of this board does, too. We really do sympathize with the cost of that. But from personal experience, I was in a situation, not as grand as yours, not as much cost as yours. I was reluctant to get a survey. It was on a much, much smaller parcel than you are dealing with. But once they did the survey, I found that there was a road on my property. I actually had, I was going to go for a variance to have some things built on my property. And I found out that I didn't need a variance because the roadway was on my property. And I have to agree with the rest of the folks here. I just, it's hard to grant a variance when we don't know what variance to grant. If you have the survey, then we know exactly what we're doing. If somebody comes, we grant that, and somebody comes along with a survey for your neighbor and said, this isn't right. So I just, like Madam Chair was saying, it just, it just really makes things a lot more clear, a lot more clean. So like I said, we all sympathize with thirty, whatever it was, thirty-one hundred dollars. That's an awful lot of money for anybody nowadays. So, but I just think, for all intents and purposes, this is the best way to go for right now.
Do we need to make a motion?
You know, it would be helpful. We as staff, we're a bit at a standstill. We, we all, we all understand both, I should say, I should speak for myself, and I know I speak, I think I speak for Vidia. We both understand both sides of this dilemma. I think we have, you know, one of us sort of leans one way on it, another one of us leans a different way. But we both understand both sides of this and the real struggle that this case in front of you provides. But to give the applicant direction, because we have, we have tried, I have even gone out to his neighbor and knocked on his neighbor's door to try to find a survey on his neighbor's property to trace back perfectly the, where the fence is. And unfortunately, we're not going to be able to do that. The neighbor was fine with what the gentleman was doing. But, you know, we, we all have really tried to kind of prove this thirty feet or lack thereof, and we haven't been able to do that. So, that being said, yes, we really do need the board's determination as how you wish us to proceed, whether or not you would require Mr. Wallace to get a variance, or whether or not you would...
A survey.
A survey, whether or not you would require a survey, or whether or not you would waive that requirement.
I ask one last thing before you make your judgment on this. How trustworthy is the GIS? And I'm only asking this for my next question.
We use the GIS to get like property locations and roughly where the right-of-way are located. But for accurate measurements within five feet, no, we do not rely on the GIS. Because even if you call Washtenaw County, well, they'll give you the data points. They will not certify it. They'll say you're using it at your own risk. You know, it's to provide you a broad-based information. But for fine information, you have to do your own monuments and points. Because the irons that are in the ground are the ones that clearly define where your property is.
So we're saying the GIS has a variance of five foot?
I don't know that it's five feet. I don't know that it's five feet, but I would not rely on it with a dead accuracy that the...
And I'm not trying to put you in a hot seat.
Absolutely.
You understand what I'm looking for. I'm a machinist by trade, so I deal with tolerance.
Absolutely.
You know, if you could emphatically or confidently say that it has a variance of five foot, then that would give me some last message to stand on.
Yeah. I would not be able to tell you the degree of deviation on it, but I can tell you enough that it provides information, but not information that I would take as certified, like, you know, like I can take it to the bank or information like that, so.
Had I measured more accurately to the bottom of this fence of mine, where it goes in instead of where it angles towards my home, if I'd have had 30 foot written on that, what do you think the outcome would have been?
It would have probably been approved.
I would have trusted you. I still trust you.
I mean, we don't require surveys for...
Zoning compliance.
For zoning compliance, and, you know, we would be, this would be a very different conversation, and it would probably need to be really a sort of full community conversation if we got to that level, because we would be requiring variances for somebody to put up a fence, or to put up a deck, or not variance, surveys.
What I'm getting at is, had I wrote the 30 foot...
It would have been approved. Sorry.
Is it okay to assume that a homeowner can make a mistake in measuring? Would it be something that I could re-measure and resubmit, pay the fee all over again, put my plans back in, instead of the board making its judgment that, no, I need the survey?
I, as a zoning administrator, I cannot unsee what I have seen. A formal document was submitted, I rendered a formal decision on it, I cannot say I did not see it, I'll pretend I did not see it, and let's start again. Unfortunately, that's where I am, so.
I understand that. I'm not asking you to unsee it. I'm asking you to come and see.
My coming and seeing there is still not going to make a difference, because I don't know where the monument irons are, where the fence, it comes back to the whole survey. The survey will prove that you probably don't need a variance at all, and you probably have more property than you think you have. So it's back to...
But that was the point, that I at least wanted these folks to understand.
I'm sure they appreciate that point, too.
So I was hoping, let's face it, we all make mistakes. Says measure once, you know, or measure twice, cut once. Unfortunately, I didn't do that. So I'll follow what you tell me to do.
Is there any other comment or question from the board?
Marlene? Marlene and I just made a comment, and I agree with her. I don't know if we could change the requirements of what is needed. I would suspect that you had, you did get a very high quote here, and that there could be other people out there that would be more than willing to help you. I just don't know who they are right now.
That company was on the recommendation of Northfield Township.
Are there any pins on your property that you know of?
I've not attempted to look. Now, I believe, I found what I thought was a survey of my property, because of the two little farmhouses out, it was actually my neighbor, it was a small portion of it. I think I found the neighbor to the east of me on Washtenaw's site. But I didn't want to continually buy these surveys online, not knowing if what I had found was correct, but I...
The only way you're gonna solve this problem, I think the only way that Vidia and staff would really be comfortable accepting it, absent this board's decision, is if you were to find, if you were to find a stake in the ground. Now, there is, there is cases where you take a metal detector, and these stakes end up getting buried over time, which is, I think, where Amy was going with that. And you basically, and what you'd have to do is, you'd have to go in the corner, because it'd probably be in the corner, somewhere not exactly to the road, it'd be off the road a little bit, because there's probably some right-of-way there. Go in with a metal detector in that little forest area and see if you can find and dig up a stake. If you were able to dig up an actual monument stake, I think you've got a different situation, assuming you could find the stake on the opposite side, I suppose.
I believe Patrick did suggest it to you there, because Patrick Sloan, like the league who works with it, he was trying to help Mr. Wallace, too, and he used to work before in another community similar to Northfield, and he had suggested, maybe you can go, sometimes it's done, you go up with a metal detector, and sometimes these stakes are there, but they tend to get buried in the soil, so if you can find a stake, that will give you a benchmark to actually pull rather than use an RWD fence that is just existing. And I would second what Ms. Otto said. You might want to call a few other surveyors. I would not just go with one quote that you have. It might have just been one of the suggested, if you had asked, maybe call around a few more times. I'm not sure how much that costs, but it does seem rather...
$3100.
Yeah, it seems rather steep, so I, maybe Mr. Julio can suggest his surveyor, whoever did his survey, did a good job.
I'll be speaking with him, it looks like.
Do we need a motion for this particular question, as it pertains just to Mr. Wallace, or are we motioning what the stance of the board is for requirements for every?
Just for Mr. Wallace.
Just for Mr. Wallace?
Yep.
Okay.
I would like to make a point, though, that the decision that you make for Mr. Wallace will be precedent-setting, though.
Sometimes when we're asked to take a narrow road, when we're asked to do things that are a little bit hard for us, it ends up to be the best thing in the end. We don't see it now, but it probably would be the best thing in the end for you.
I'll let Jackie make the motion.
Do you want me to make the motion?
Yes, please.
Okay. I don't know exactly how to say this, but in regards to Mr. Wallace, I'll make the motion that the board require a survey in accordance to the variance 36943C2. Is that okay?
In accordance with section 3.
Okay.
I'll support.
All in favor?
Aye.
We appreciate you coming out.
Yeah, we appreciate your time.
Anyway, because I know this is, like I said, I know it's an expense, but from our point of view, particularly on variances, we have to know what it is that you're asking for.
And it's more to protect yourself than anything else.
No, I understand. I'm not upset with anybody but myself, so.
But do call around, there are an awful lot of survey companies out there.
Well, I tore up the internet. These folks are so booked out, it's ridiculous. Most of them said four to five weeks. That was the only one that actually took the time to call me back. The rest of them, it was like trying to get ahold of Comcast, it was horrible. He laughed, serious. Most of them were about three grand, you know, just ballparking it when I told them what I wanted and what I needed. That was the only one that took the time to actually give me a quote. So, all right, I'll be calling this gentleman. Thank you for your time.
All right, thank you. Agenda item 8B, back to case number JZBA. At 600 East Shore Drive, Whitmore Lake Road. Do the board members have any questions for the applicant or Vidia?
The only comment I wanted to make is, I appreciate Mr. Suida bringing us this information, but it doesn't solve the problem one way or another, I don't think. Number one, you can't have, from what I understand, Vadia, you told us we can't have a road or a private road going only to one home. So that point is all mute, and my concern is I kind of question the purpose of the road other than going to the home. It doesn't really give any other purpose other than if it's a driveway or it's a road, it's saying it belongs to that house. So I don't see the purpose, and then eventually, we're gonna have to do a variance anyways. So I don't think that this solves anything. That's all I wanted to say with that.
Thank you.
Okay. Madam Chair?
Yes.
I'm not quite clear what the point is of the road. Did you want to sell some of that property to Mr.?
No, no.
Okay.
I've lived there 30 years.
Oh, okay.
And I've looked at developing this.
Can you please come to the podium so that we can get it on the record?
All right, that makes sense.
I've lived there 30 years, and in better economic times, I looked at developing this. I've given up. I was told to develop the back property, I needed 66 feet for a road, and I would suggest the same for this guy here. I have nothing against this guy personally, it's just he needs 66 feet for a road.
Okay.
I don't need 66 feet.
No, he doesn't.
He just has to meet the driveway standards, and the driveway standards are not 66.
Maybe, Mr. Suida, at the time you were asked to put 66, you were planning to put more than one home?
Absolutely.
Then you would need a road to go back there. This gentleman is building one home, it becomes a driveway, it cannot become a private road.
He can put a driveway back there, but I'd like to see something more like my sketch rather than what's been proposed.
Can I ask you a question? Are you saying your property is landlocked? Is that the situation, or?
No, no, my property's not landlocked at all.
Okay.
But I was told for development, I needed 66 feet. I would suggest the same.
Do you want more than one home back there?
Anything that he can, you know, the buyer, Mr. Kogo, wants to do...
Sell it.
He can, but I, I'm not really too keen on the variance. I think this variance he's seeking, it's a self-created thing. By proposing a split, he's got the problem. I don't think it's an ordinance problem, I think it's self-created.
Okay.
What do you think of US for 66 feet? If that's not self-serving, John.
What do you mean self-serving?
You want to put 66 foot over there for you.
Gentlemen, we can't have you debating on the floor.
Yeah, you can talk about this stuff afterward, maybe.
Yeah, I would accept some kind of access there and building in the back, rather than a non-conforming lot.
Okay, all right. All right, thank you, Mr. Suida.
Can I have a rebuttal?
Yes, Mr. Kogo.
I don't know if he needs one, but...
You know what? I don't need a rebuttal, because I don't understand what he wants.
Okay.
It looks like he should have bought the property 20 years ago to create this road back to his property, and I don't understand what worries that.
But there are driveway standards, and, correct, there are driveway standards in the, yes, driveway standards, and, yes, so...
Mr. Julio, when he develops this parcel with an individual one home, he will comply with the required setbacks, driveway length, and all the other standards.
Right, okay. All right, I will entertain a motion.
Oh, sure, I'll do it, okay. I'd like to make a motion to approve case number JZBA 160007 for a variance from section 14.23A5 to allow for a proposed lot split resulting in two parcels, A and B, with proposed parcel B having a width-to-depth ratio of 1 to 4.47 instead of a width-to-depth ratio of 1 to 4 as required by the State Land Division Act. I'll support.
On the question, Madam Chair, do we need to put the amount of the variance in there? Is it 40 feet? Is that what it is?
It was 20, wasn't it?
It is a ratio of .7, which is a 40-foot depth.
Oh, 40-foot, oh, okay.
If I may suggest...
Sure, go ahead.
Subject to the findings of fact listed in our letter dated August 4th.
Okay, subject to the findings of fact listed in the letter dated August 4th. And I'll support.
All in favor?
Aye.
All right, Mr. Kogo, your variance is approved.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Thank you for your time.
Agenda number, item number nine, approval of minutes from July 18, 2016. You all have them in your packets. Are there any corrections or amendments to the minutes?
I'll make a motion, Madam Chair, to approve the minutes from, is it July 18?
July 18.
Dispense for the reading.
All in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
All right, there seems to be no public left to make any comments. Do the ZBA board members have any comments? None?
Madam, let me back up, Madam Chair. I just want to thank everybody that's here, Lisa, and Mary, and Jim Nelson, and the planner Vidia, and our manager also. I'd just like to thank everybody for being here, for taking their time out to help us out here. And I, as one, and I'm sure the rest of the board feels the same way, I really appreciate all that you're doing for us. Thank you so much for everybody.
Yes, thank you for coming out in the evenings. Announcement of next meeting, September 19, 2016, if there is an item for the agenda.
Mr. Wallace?
Do I have a motion to adjourn?
So are.
Support.
All in favor?
Aye.
Thank you.